Okay.
And good evening, welcome to the Mayor and City Council Workshop for the month of September for City of Tawnytown. We'll begin with our pledge to the flag. I'll ask Councilwoman Foster to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this evening. We'll begin this meeting with our review of the minutes from the August 3rd and August 8th regular meetings. Is there any discussion on those minutes as presented this evening? All right, hearing none. If they're satisfactory, then on Monday evening, I'll ask for approval on those. Our next item on the agenda is reception of delegation, Mr. Shane Fitzgerald, regarding an indoor archery range. Does staff want to open us up or go straight into the delegation?
Well, just since this is a little out of the ordinary, this is an unusual use that calls for Mayor and Council to approve the use within the city. So it's beyond the purview of the Planning Commission initially. So this is about just whether the use as described is going to be permitted.
Very good. Mr. Fitzgerald, if you're present, please step up to the lectern.
I'm making sure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm Shane Fitzgerald. I own Bow Hunters Zen, which has now been in business 31 years. I started in 1992 at 19 West Baltimore Street where I had an indoor archery range approved then. We were here until 2006 when they did Streetscape, that kind of the parking messed me up, so I moved to Barlow. From Barlow, I moved back to Westminster and back to Tawnytown last week. So I'm looking for approval. I rent. On the paper, you have everything. It's highlighted in pink is my showroom, and in the yellow is where I would like to put my six archery lanes to teach archery. We teach all kinds of archery, but NASP is our big, the one we do the most of. That's the one that now if your children are in school, they teach it now in most all the schools in Maryland. It's a very big thing, and it keeps the kids that aren't always athletic into the sport.
What was it? You called it NAS?
NAS.
Said New Archer Safety?
Well, it's not really. I don't know.
Not really?
How they ended up wording it out.
Okay.
But it started back roughly about 2010. And for instance, like we do, last year, we did the program at the Ag Center. They held the state shoot there. We had 857 kids signed up to shoot that tournament. I did that tournament, and the guy that runs the NAS says, hey, would you come to Kentucky to the Nationals and help us out? So I went to Kentucky. There, they had over 15,000 kids signed up to shoot. So it's getting really, it's really big right now. And I get calls every day if we teach lessons and stuff. And I was, last year and stuff, I was working out of my house in Westminster. I was teaching private lessons, but didn't have enough space. So I got talking to Dr. Tate, see if he had room, and he says, yeah, I have some room here you could use. So that's where we're trying to get it approved. Also, I do own the Sugar Shack, which is sitting at the liquor store, the ice cream stand.
Right.
So I'm kind of trying to get that also. It comes together. We can do like birthday parties and that kind of stuff.
Right.
So.
In terms of archery ranges, in what way are they, are they regulated by the state in any fashion? Is it along the same idea of a firearm range?
Basically, you have basically whistle commands when they can pick up their bows and shoot. Safety netting is all up or backstop. We use block targets as our backstop. Bow wise, most of the bows we teach with in the NAS program are all, they're 20 pounds, so they don't have a lot of cast.
Right.
I've been teaching archery now in the NAS program for about 15 years, and there's, we've never had any accidents. It's, when I teach some of my classes, the parents really, like because I do whistle commands, and the kids know them commands like the back of their hand. My parents are like, I'm going home and buy whistles so I can get them to listen at home. So.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Well, it certainly has my attention. I think this is a good idea. I guess my question is why, I mean, I know you'd mentioned that this is one of the exceptions, that it has to come before council, but what is it specifically that where we have to approve use of the property for this, or what exactly is it?
So the code states that basically it prohibits discharge of any gun, pistol, air rifle, bow, yada, 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 throughout the city. But then this section shall not be construed to prohibit archery that is lawfully allowed indoors within the corporate limits of the city by any business or other concern having approval to do so by the mayor and council, nor shall the same apply to any shooting or target range in existence on the effective date. So that's, otherwise, the code is silent on archery.
Right.
And I think that was brought into city limits, it was brought to the city ordinance around 92. I'm not sure.
It was roughly the time that the city was looking at purchasing the Rod and Gun Club.
Okay.
So I suspect there may be some connection between the Rod and Gun Club moving out of town and the city acquiring that property, but kind of before my time, so.
Got it.
Because I opened that range in 92, that's, this was all going on the same time.
Okay.
And all my friends are like, did you cause this to bring people to your range? I'm like, no, I just am giving them an opportunity to be able to shoot.
Oh, come on, own it. Say, yeah, I did this. You got it.
Well, I didn't want to make a bunch of customers mad. So.
That's inevitable. Any other questions from council?
I will add that the property Mr. Fitzgerald is referring to is zoned commercially. It's in the general business district, which is our most, our broadest commercials in the city, so.
Okay. I believe originally you were at the Old Bakery on West Baltimore Street.
Yes, I was in the Old Bakery till I got divorced, and we had to sell that. Then I moved to 19 West Baltimore Street where Ballinger Gun Shop is.
Okay, right.
And I was there until they started Streetscape.
Right. I remember you there.
And at the time, Charlie Spielman owned that. He was in the middle of selling that about the same time I moved. I moved up to Barlow. I was trying to keep my customers. I didn't want to get too far away from town.
Right. You were right along the main stretch towards Gettysburg. I remember seeing your sign. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else? So I believe what we'll be asking for Monday evening is a decision by the council on whether to approve this use. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. At that point, the process will be going to the Planning Commission?
So there will be, it sounds like the intensity of the use of the impact is going to be very minimal. You know, it certainly will, and you may have already discussed this with the zoning administrator, as far as like how many, how much, you know, how many patrons are expected to be there at one time, you know, to see if there's any real measurable impact. So it may be something that if the impact is minimal, would not trigger a site development plan. You know, enough, it appears that nothing additional is being constructed, no new parking areas, egress, egress, anything like that. So it may just be a matter of a simple zoning certificate and change of use, building permit with the county to switch from whatever the existing use is to the showroom and archery lanes.
So a special exception from Mayor and Council will not trigger a site plan?
Not.
Okay.
Code is silent on that.
Just verifying. It's an unusual step, so I want to make sure that it's not going to cause anything additional. Very good. I appreciate it. Is your showroom open now down there? Are you?
My shop is ready to open whenever I can get approval.
Okay, gotcha.
So the range, I still want to do a little work in it. We basically, on the paper you'll see there, we have it laid out for six shooters at a time. And basically, like I said, we run a class, kind of like they do karate, dance, anything.
Right.
So it's, they basically will sign up. We run four weeks. I used to run them eight weeks. We changed it to four because I had so many kids, and they're like, they hate waiting eight weeks. So I was trying to do the rollover every four weeks to keep them all motivated.
So just out of curiosity, not related to this, what ages do you teach?
Usually I start around seven, eight years old. There's where I'm finding kids that are capable of shooting a bow and pay attention.
Right, understood.
So, yes.
Very good.
My granddaughters, they started when they were three and four.
Awesome. Very good. Well, I appreciate it. And pending a positive outcome on Monday evening, I'll be happy to see you back in town again.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. All right, so I'll ask the clerk to add that to the agenda Monday evening for a decision. I'll now ask members of the council if they have any conflicts of interest on anything in the agenda this evening. No, sir? All right. All right, at this point, I'll open up the floor for public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. To clarify the guidelines we use for public comment, first off, you'll have three minutes to make your comment. What you'll do is step up to the lectern here, announce your name and your address, and then you may speak for three minutes. As a reminder, it is not a question and answer time. We are here to listen to what you have to say. If you do have questions that require answers, we'll make sure that you have provided your information to the clerk, and then we'll give an answer accordingly as appropriate. With that, I'll go ahead and open it up. I see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about some of the things in these two articles in the paper about the petition that was signed. Don't worry, it's all good news. It's not good to change horses in the middle of a stream. To go from 4,794 votes, people eligible to vote, to 5,490, it's not a good thing to wait to the last minute to do it. The votes were in from July 19th to August 21st before they were counted, and that's a problem right there. Why it took so long, that's in the newspaper all the time about the big political parties. I think Tawnytown isn't big enough to have that even happen. Also, I can't see any reason to put any blame on a Tawnytown employee when they answer the telephone, give information. I expect the council to always support their employees unless they're robbing a bank. I'll let you off on that one. I have a question to ask you. How long has it been since hundreds of citizens showed any interest in something and going on in Tawnytown? I don't think it should be discouraged. So when this much interest is shown, I hope you will encourage it. 95% of these meetings, it's me, myself, and I showing up. So those are things to think about when we have it happen another time.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public wish to come make a comment? Please step up.
Hello, my name is Tara Stansik. I live at 29 Amica Street, which is in the Creekside Community. And hello, Mayor and Council. Hope you guys are doing well today. I first wanted to say thank you to Mayor Vance and the Tawnytown DPW and the owner of former Robbs Motors for erecting a fence to prevent drivers from using that parking lot as a cut through to Amica Street. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it, and so does the rest of our community. And then on behalf of my fellow colleagues who could not attend today's workshop, they just wanted to send in a reminder that on Friday, although I understand that it was the holiday weekend, on Friday, they did come here and submit or provide a document, which they were requesting. The newspaper articles that were for the public hearing, we are looking for four newspaper articles that should have, you know, been submitted to the county and also to the Department of Planning to provide that information, that there would be a public hearing. So that was sent to you, and I'm hoping to receive something back. And they're hoping to receive something, something back within, maybe by Friday. So. And then just really quick, I'm going to try really quick. So this is in regards to the Souls annexation and the petitioning. So I just wanted to say that the residents of Tawnytown elected the town council to publicly support, recommend, and ensure that our voices are heard. Residents should be able to trust our elected officials to guide them in unfamiliar policies, regulations, and codes. Envision Tawnytown, as you're aware, it's a grassroots organization with ordinary citizens with whom are not experts on state, county, and municipal policies, regulations, and codes. The residents of Tawnytown believe the town council would provide transparent and unbiased guidance regarding petition procedures outside of the city's charter and codes, as they have had previous experience with referendum petitions. So regardless of what happened, or regardless of any misinformation, regardless of the outcome, you know, there were 818 registered voters that wanted to bring the annexation to a vote. There were multiple volunteers who circulated and helped spread the word, business owners who provided free services for printing and signage, and utilizing their offices for voters to sign during off hours. It was a humbling experience, and Envision Tawnytown will continue to support and advocate for the Tawnytown community as we are here to stay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I do want to speak real quick to something you said there. I did receive the letter, and I was hoping to see Mr. Thomas here this evening, because that's who addressed the letter. Is the information for you as part of Envision Tawnytown, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you rephrase that?
The information that Mr. Thomas requested, is it for you and Envision Tawnytown?
It's for.
Representing you, or?
It's, I'm representing them.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. So do you want that information yourself if we have it this evening? I said, he submitted the request, so I was expecting to give it to you.
Sure, yeah, I would love it if you have that information and it's in writing.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Mr. Weeprich, you have any information there?
Sure.
Very good. I'll ask that you retrieve that from Mr. Weeprich, Ms. Stansik? He has information there for you. No problem. I would have forgotten to.
Oh, no, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Perfect. Anyone else wish to speak this evening?
How's it going? My name is Christopher Miller, 107 Atravianian Road, Tawnytown, Maryland. So just to follow up on what was said, you know, I don't represent any group besides myself. Again, 800 people signed the petition. Well, actually, you know, it was a thousand plus people that actually signed it. You know, some weren't registered voters, but we're going to make sure they become registered voters. Essentially, what you guys should do as representatives is make sure you hear out the people at Tawnytown. If you would have gone to any, I don't know, any house along the street, if you would have canvassed around Tawnytown at all, you would have found out about 80 to 90% of the people are not in support of the annexation. Just about anybody who answered a door will tell you that they were not in support of it. And, you know, I saw a post, and it was basically that, you know, you guys make decisions even if they're unpopular. You know, just be mindful that you're representatives. You're not rulers, you don't, while you guys get a vote and kind of dictate it down, that's not what you're really here for. You're here to represent. So I hope you guys reflect on that a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Okay, we will have a report from city staff later on the results of the petition. I do want to say I was very pleased with the amount of people who took it upon themselves to gather the signatures, to submit signatures, to raise awareness on this. I appreciate that greatly. The only way for an issue to go to vote is through a petition. The council can't send it to vote. They can't say, we want everyone to vote on this. It doesn't happen that way. The only way is if it's forced upon the council to bring it to referendum, which is why the process is extremely important. I was very pleased. I was following progress where I could to see how it was going, how you were doing, and it looked like you had a lot of outpouring of support from people, which I appreciate. It's great to see people engage. It's the second petition I've seen during my time between council and mayor, and I appreciate the hard work you put into it. So thank you for that. With that, we'll move into our resolutions, ordinances, and agreements for the evening, beginning with up for adoption on Monday evening. We have ordinance 06-2022, FY 2122, Budget Amendment Number Three. You want to start us off, Mr. Weeprich?
Sure, I'll try to do this quickly because I think we went into
We went in over it last month.
Pretty good amount of detail last month.
Yeah.
So the gist of this is we are pushing a number of things into next year. We had vehicles that were ordered that didn't get delivered in time for the fiscal year, before the close of the fiscal year. We did have an increase in, in state income tax revenue that's reflected here in the FY 22 Budget Amendment. So of course, it nets out to zero between the decrease and increases. Most of it, again, is just moving projects and expenses forward into the FY 23 year, which is the subject of the next item.
Right.
So shall we just kind of roll, we'll vote on them separately?
Yeah, we'll go separate on that.
Discuss them together.
We did discuss it kind of at length last month, but I do want to ask council if they have any questions on it this month before you adopt on Monday evening, if you choose to do so. Okay. I'm going to ask members of council the same on ordinance 072022, the 2223 Budget Amendment Number One, which is the correlation of the 2122 Budget Amendment Number Three. Any concerns have been raised since last month? Anything to add from staff?
This one is sort of the receiving end of all those projects and expenses that didn't come through before the end of the fiscal year. So just pushing them into the current year.
Right. All right, everyone satisfied? Both of those will be up for your approval on Monday evening. Next, we have Resolution 2022-12. This is our monthly water allocation, this for the month of September. Any questions? Let's start with Mayor Portem Vigliotti.
As always, I did the math by hand, and it checks out.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions besides the math from members of the council?
I would like to call to your attention that it probably looks a little bit different this month, and that is we reset the line for the projects with preliminary plan approval. Those that were on there, one of them had a Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement that has expired. That was Copperfield Section Eight, so they no longer have preliminary plan approval. And the other was, when this line was put in, we had a higher estimate for Meads Crossing Section Two than the final plans produced. So that's why we've zeroed that out. So there is nothing in the development pipeline right now that has reached that preliminary plan approval stage.
Okay.
So this, this gives us a little more accurate bottom line on the resolution. So we were kind of reserving stuff that really.
It's kind of a clean slate now, right? Very good. Any questions on that as it's been explained? Okay. That'll be up also for your approval on Monday evening. Mr. Weeprich, do you have a city manager report for us this evening, sir?
Certainly do. As we mentioned a little while ago, the Sewell annexation, the petition effort did not succeed. The city clerk tallied everything up, and the petition was received with 1,043 signers. Of those, there were 52 that were eligible, 149 unregistered voters, four with no signature, three duplicates, and seven out of the city limits signatures. And then there were 10 signatures on a page circulated by an unregistered voter. So altogether, there were 818 valid signatures, as opposed to the 1,099 that were needed. Had, had it been closer, the city clerk may have spent additional time on some of the eligible entries and tried to do a little more research, but it was kind of a moot point at that point. So that's what the end result was.
Okay.
Let's see. Charter and code updates. We had some discussion about the urban mixed district regulations at the Planning Commission meeting last month. More to come on that, but there was some, at least we've gotten things kicked off. So hopefully, we'll have some good discussion this coming month on that. We did talk about equivalent front yard revisions, and that is for those corner lots where they essentially get kind of a double front yard whammy. So there was some discussion about reducing the required setback for things like fences and sheds while maintaining that setback for the house itself. But we hopefully will come up with some actual draft verbiage this month. And the last thing we talked about was the restricted general business district. There's been some conversation about that, and Mayor Vance sort of tasked us with talking about that at the Planning Commission last month. So again, this, this area is a very small district from the intersection of Merwin Drive and East Baltimore Street out to East Baltimore and Fairground Avenue. And it's kind of a buffer commercial zone where it was a residential zone, and we allowed like some modest office use and smaller, smaller businesses that wouldn't be, have the same intense intensity of use as general business to be right next to the houses along that block. There have been some concerns, much as there was when the district was created, because it is kind of a limited opportunity. So there were some suggestions that maybe we allow some, some special exception uses in there, so there would still be a public process involved. If something wasn't, you know, clearly stated on the list of, of uses as it is now, that there could be a public process involved. People could come, the neighbors would know what was going on. And there was also some discussion about perhaps adding single-family dwellings back into the zone, because that's what the block was before we got in there and started messing with it.
And half of it is still single-family dwellings, right.
Right. And I think at the, at the time, there was expectation that there was going to be greater demand to convert the houses to office use. And in the intervening time, we've seen one property since the initial one that prompted it convert. So perhaps allowing single-family homes would give, you know, another use option to, you know, the parcels that people are looking to sell and put into some other use.
Okay.
So things that were talked about. We did not talk about solar, because after I reached out to MML, learned that there is some preemption from the Public Service Commission on solar fields.
Right.
And after discussing with the city attorney, it sounds like that that is the case. However, the preemption is not, I guess, invoked frequently. So if we can adopt regulations that are not objectionable to the solar developers, we may be fine. But if we do something too heavy-handed, we may be challenged and end up with the Public Service Commission telling us what's going to go in. So. So, so that will be back on the agenda for this month. And, see, that's about it for the charter and code stuff. Meadowbrook Interceptor, no, no news there. And Meadowbrook, or I'm sorry, Robert Mill Run and Broad Street Reconstruction. We did reschedule the community information meeting to September 14th. It's going to be held at the American Legion, and we do have the 90% design. We've met with CDM Smith to go over that. And this next meeting really is going to be, hopefully, confirming with the folks who came out the first time and gave us specific areas of concern, just to make sure that we've addressed them in the design. And we expect this to be more people gathered around a set of plans, kind of talking about the specifics with, for their property and things, where the first one was a little bit more of a general presentation. So, that will be coming up next week. Last thing, it's not on the written report, but I did want to make you aware. The de-watering project, also known as the belt filter press, is kind of dragging on. We've had a lot of challenges with, with getting plans approved and working through the site development process. So, we've had some conversations with our contractor, and we may be looking at some significant change order figures by the time all is said and done. So, labor costs have increased. There's been some efforts going into extending warranties and things like that because of the delays. So, not, not really a happy project, but I did want to make you aware of it because in the coming months, and it may be several months from now, but we may be coming back to you with a pretty substantial change order that's going to increase the cost of the project. So, not, typically, when we have these public works projects, they're kind of under the radar screen. The reason some of these others were on there is because they had to do a lot with capacity improvements, and that's something that we were very much focused on with regard to the capital improvement program. Typically, improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. You know, our engineer project manages it, and you hardly hear anything about it that it's done. This one just is not going so smoothly, so I wanted to make you aware of that. And that's about it for me, unless you have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions for the city manager? I do want to ask, if possible, going back to the charter and code updates that we spoke of, is there any chance that we could see for our November meeting, the equivalent front yard revisions and the restricted general business district ideas from the planning commission? That gives them two months to work on it?
I would think so.
That would be acceptable?
I'm hoping that we'll come out of this month's commission meeting with some, some bullet points that we can incorporate into a draft ordinance.
Okay.
So, I would certainly hope that by November.
So, I would think if we can get it in November here, if we want to kick it back to them for any reason in November, that's fine, because they generally take December off. So, kind of not have it held up in the holiday season. So, if that's possible, I would greatly appreciate seeing it in November for those two items. Based on the conversation I, I heard at the meeting, I think there's a lot of great ideas coming out of planning commission on that. So, get them on paper and let us see them. All right, do we have any questions on departmental reports this evening? All right, Mr. Gallow, do you have a legal report for us tonight?
I did, I do. Good evening, mayor and council. Wanted to give you an update on our enforcement action with Chestnut Court, the cat house. As you recall, and I don't remember the specific details, because I think the last time we talked, it was happening right then. But, so we had a search warrant executed in conjunction with Carroll County Animal Control, and the search warrant had 24 cats removed, live cats removed from the place. It confirmed all of our worst fears about the condition of the property, and it's worse than you can imagine. The, the people on site were in, in sick, they were, they got sick, basically, from dealing with it. So, after that search warrant, that ended up with some criminal charges being filed against the owner for animal cruelty, things like that. And the first criminal case is supposed to be heard next Tuesday, the 13th. And in between that time, there was, were some county civil actions, you know, the, the civil side of the animal control thing. However, those hearings were postponed until the outcome of the criminal case. So, we were getting closer to a resolution. We had a meeting internally to figure out, what do we do? It's, it's not necessarily, how do we do it? How do we go to court and get it fixed? But if you go to court and the judge says, "Okay, what do you want to do?" What exactly are you going to do to fix up a townhouse that could be, it possibly need to be destroyed, and it's in the middle of a stack of townhouses? So, there's a lot of, what do you do? In the meantime, while we're putting that together, Animal Control has visited the property more, and they found more cats have been brought back to the house. So, this past week, another search warrant was executed. This time, they recovered one cat. The guy is obviously forbidden to have animals while this is going on. So, they were, found one more cat. The conditions are identical. There was no improvements, really, although he did try to do something by like scraping up the floor, but that just caused everything to smell more because it disturbed it. So, so the new cat is going to result in more criminal charges, and that case is in October now. So, it's questionable whether these cases will get put together. We're, we're not involved in that, obviously, but the issue for us is, we really can't do anything with the gentleman there until the criminal case is involved, because he's not going to want to make a deal with us if he has to make some deals to stay out of jail. So, it's ongoing. It's an issue, but we're getting further than we were. It's surprising that we still have to come back with more search warrants and we find more cats. So, these aren't, we didn't miss them, in case that's what your first thought is. Okay, it wasn't hiding. These are new cats. Okay. So, that's what's going on with that. Our code enforcement, Mr. Hale is really, we're trying to figure it out. Our initial thought was this is going to cost money. Well, you know that, it's going to cost money. If the city takes action, the city's going to have to pay the money to take the action, and then we can put a lien on the property and sell the property, I guess.
At some point.
Right? I mean, it's, you see where this goes. And so, the theory was, perhaps we could work out an arrangement with the owner. Instead of going to court and making the judge force him to let us do this, how about you let us do it? And then we'll just work it out as a deal. But as I said, with criminal cases pending, he's not willing to make deals with anybody until he finds out what's going to happen to him on that level. And this could be a jailable offense, this, you know, so this could be something where he goes to jail.
Well, especially with the additional charges, and, I mean, it's, it's getting compounded.
25 counts, it's more than 25, because I think it's two per animal for, but it's, it's a significant thing. So, that's why this is kind of in limbo, except it's supposedly getting better because the cats are gone. But like the song said, it came back the very next day. So, there you go. So, that's the status of that. And then, of course, the past month, we've been dealing with the petition and the implications of that, and city manager Reggie did results on that. Questions?
Do we have any questions?
I'm glad you're with us tonight here in person. I really am.
Happy to be here.
I understand that the, the process with the cat house is, is getting a little drawn out, but it's good to see it's, that things are moving. I think for the sake of the neighbors, there is some progress being made, and they suffered far too long with that.
It's very difficult to say, "I want something done," and then once you say, "You have a magic wand, what would you like to do?" Figuring out what you would do, because it is very, very bad.
Yeah. I saw the pictures. I believe it.
Jay, is there just one person that lives in this house?
There's, there's two owners of title, but there's only the gentleman that lives there, if you can say he lives there. We, we don't, we don't know whether he actually stays there and lives there, or lives somewhere else, or in a car, or something. But, so there will be two people involved when we get to the property, even though they have separated or split up or whatever. So, that just makes it more convoluted.
Right. Okay. Any more questions? All right, we shall move forward. Under new business, item number one, we have our monthly financial report. Any questions regarding that report submitted to you? Everyone's good? I'll ask the same of you of the accounts payables. Questions, concerns, general queries? Nothing? Both of those will be up for your approval on Monday evening, if you so desire. New business number three, inspection and maintenance agreement of stormwater management facilities for F.P. Duffy, Inc. Mr. Weeprich, you want to start us off?
Sure. Part of our usual subdivision or site plan process. F.P. Duffy has been approved by the planning commission, so after that, we have to make sure that we have a stormwater management agreement in place. This gives us the authority to go on the property and inspect the stormwater facilities, which we need to do every three years per our NPDES permit. And also, this obligates them to make repairs that we identify should any be needed, and also allows us to make repairs if they fail to, so that we can maintain compliance with, with our stormwater permits. So, basically, just promising that they're going to maintain stuff, we can inspect it, and if they don't maintain it, we can step in.
Got it. Questions? I do want to point out on page four, if we could update the mayor's name on that page?
Oh, dear. Okay.
That'd be awesome. I don't like signing my name if it's not my name on there to begin with. It says Robert Flickinger. What is that? All right.
On page four?
Page four?
Paragraph?
In the paragraph?
Oh, okay, okay. I was, I'm sorry, I was looking at the signature lines. Okay.
Oh, no.
Thank you. Okay. Missed that one.
That's okay. All right, last chance for council. Anything? Very good. That'll be up Monday evening. Next, we have the public works agreement for Duffy Box and Recycling Building addition. Take it away.
Okay. Very similar scenario, although just not limited to stormwater. So, this is, the, again, the project's been approved by the planning commission. The developer posts a bond to cover the costs of the infrastructure improvements, and this basically says what they're going to do as far as stormwater management, soil and erosion control, and grading and stabilization. So, they've posted the bond already. They are looking to get their grading permit and start work on the project, and this is just our usual public works agreement, that if, if they fail to make these improvements, again, their contractors obligated to do the work for us at the prices stated in here. And with the bonding that's in place, we would have the funding to, to make sure the work gets done if need be.
Very good. Rather standard. Questions? Okay. Sounds good to me. We'll decide Monday evening. Number five, acceptance of Meadowbrook Section 5. Where are we, Mr. Weeprich?
We are still waiting for the manhole adjustments to be done.
Okay.
So, I know the, the developer has been leaning on the contractor to get out there, and that just has not happened yet. So, we're still, we can't, can't say it's quite ready. The curb repairs and all the other punchless items are done, but we still have manholes that rock when vehicles drive across them, which will not make the residents happy in the wee hours of the morning, I'm sure. So, so that still needs to be done. So, I would like to, and, and if we're lucky, by Monday, they will be done, but I'm not going to, you know, hold my breath for it at this point, because they've, it's been the last punchless item for weeks now. So, at any rate, I'm hoping that Monday, we can authorize the mayor to sign the, the deeds once the manhole adjustments are finished, assuming they get done before next month.
Jim, if these aren't finished by Monday, will it have to wait until next month, or can we still?
That's, that's what I'm saying. If, if you authorize the mayor to execute the deeds upon that last punchless item, we can do it that way.
Have we, have we received any kind of justification as to why it's taken longer than we expected?
Just, uh...
A sign of the times?
It takes everybody longer.
Workload for the contractor. Just, you know, it's, it's apparently not a, a long, drawn-out process, but they just have work scheduled every place else and just haven't gotten back to this project.
Okay. Is there any particular deadline that's relying on this happening right now? Anything super crucial? Nothing?
Certainly, the developer would like to be done with it and...
I'm sure.
Completely out of the picture, but that's, there's no pressure for us to accept it.
Right.
Other than, it's just part of our normal process. So, you know, if, if we want to wait until, until they're, well, we do want to wait until the manhole lids are adjusted.
Well, we'll definitely wait until manhole lids are adjusted. Right. I, I personally would say, if it's not ready by Monday night, we're just going to kick it to next month. It's, at this point, maybe that'll help them get it done a little sooner, and we can be done with it, but...
I'll pass word on.
Okay. Any questions on that from the council? Hopefully, it'll be done by Monday, and we can kick it out. Very good. I will now open it up to the public for comment on agenda items. If what you want to talk about is on this piece of paper, you are welcome to come up and speak about it at the lectern. All right. Nothing this evening? Very good. Following adjournment of this open meeting, the mayor and council will be entering into a closed session. September 7th, 2022, in accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle 5, Meetings, Section 3, 305B, this meeting will be closed as closed only to consider a matter that concerns proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state. List of topics to be discussed is just that, considering a matter that concerns proposal for business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state. Mr. Gallow, does that satisfy the reading of the? Very good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the open meeting, and then we will enter into closed session once the council chambers are vacated.
Motion to adjourn the open meeting and enter into closed session.
All right, I do have that motion. Do I have a second to that? Very good. With a motion from Councilwoman Foster and a second from Councilwoman Fuller to adjourn the open meeting and enter into closed session once chambers are vacated, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Very good. We'll be in a short recess before entering into closed session.